We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone here with us tonight? And we're going to begin with public comment. Is there anyone in the room that has public comment on any agenda item? Okay, how about online? Is there anyone online with public comment? Okay, thanks. Moving on to discuss executive sessions. We are holding one tonight after the school board meeting. That's what this is.
Mr. Seabees?
And just to note that it's regarding a personnel item.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, moving on to four point one, report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Just one quick thing. We had previously discussed about applying for some grant money to support the physical repairs at Potts Grove Middle School. Just want to thank the team, Mr. Lukabeche, Casey Blankenbiller is back there as well. And our friends at CMTA did complete the application, so that application is submitted and will have to wait until, I think, November, until we hear back. But the application is submitted and we feel good about the progress. I want to thank these two gentlemen and the other folks involved in making sure that that happens. This is a great opportunity for us to offset partially at least the cost for some very necessary improvements at our middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to five point one, receiving of the accounts.
I would like to make a motion that we approve April 2024 high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve five point one. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Six point one?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and six dollars and nine cents for May 2024 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve six point one to pay the bills. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to seven point one, treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report for April 2024 and file it for audit.
We have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Action items, personnel.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve eight point one.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion and a second to approve eight point one. Any questions or comments?
Well, I would just like to congratulate Mrs. Kohler and thank her for always doing so much for all of our kids. She's been, I think, at every, every school? But now you will be, right? Well, congratulations and thank you for all you do.
Any others? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Congratulations. Moving on to action items, eight point two.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve eight point two through eight point ten.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the remaining personnel items. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I would just like to congratulate all the retirees. Enjoy your, your new chapter in your life and welcome to our new staff.
I would like to call attention. We do have a, a new staff member. Well, after your vote, we'll have a new staff member who actually is joining us. Ms. Lauren Friedman is in the back. She is going to be joining us as a new speech and language therapist, a location to be determined. And Lauren, you have someone with you?
Welcome, Lauren.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Movements pass. Welcome.
You're officially onboard.
All right, moving on to actions, items, business.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve nine point one. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to nine point two.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point two.
Okay, motion and a second to approve nine point two. Any questions or comments about this? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to nine point three.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve nine three. Any questions or comments with regard to this item? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. We're moving on to nine point four.
I would like to make a motion, we approve nine point four.
Okay, motion and a second to approve nine point four. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to nine point five.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve nine point five. Any questions or comments with regard to this item? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Nine point six.
I'd like to make a motion, we combine nine point six and nine point seven.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve nine point six and nine point seven. Any questions or comments with regard to those? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Movements pass. Moving to nine point eight.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point eight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve nine point eight. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Leckie.
Absolutely.
That's all. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to nine point nine.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine point nine and nine point ten.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve nine point nine and nine point ten. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Movements pass. Action items, ten, education.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point one with an explanation for the community.
At, at this point, I'm recommending that, we, we still haven't had the contract yet reviewed by our solicitor. So at this point, we, we have made progress working with the YWCA. We anticipate having an agreement that's mutually beneficial, but we can put the vote off until our June meeting.
Question before we move on. This reads as if we're back in Lower Potts Grove for the room. Is that, did that change?
No, we, the, the program, we anticipate the program will be at the King Street location and not at Lower Potts Grove this year. So, for a couple of reasons. One, it does take some pressure off in getting that room set up. And two, they do have an existing location. It is close to other resources they have, which would be beneficial in our first year of working together. So for those reasons, we're going to keep it there. It shouldn't impact our, our ability to recruit Potts Grove students because we'll be able to provide transportation through the YWCA. So we, we anticipate that we'll be able to recruit twenty, uh, Potts Grove families and populate that classroom.
Is the idea that we're going to keep it there for the next few years until we run for the grant again? And will that impact, because I know part of the grant was having an established program.
Correct.
Does the established program matter if it's on our location or their location?
So our primary focus right now is to get, get it up and running so that we can demonstrate to the granting body that we do in fact have a program, do have an existing partnership, and have some experience. I think I've, I've shared previously with this, with this board that it is our vision to have multiple classrooms up on, in Potts Grove buildings, at, at, and possibly even community, area, community locations of high need, and possibly even the high school where we can potentially support internships and, and provide learning opportunities for kids. That is the long-term vision. We are not the grantee right now, so we're working with YWCA and partnering with them through their grant. So this, the, it's going to look a little different with them being the grantee than if we were the grantee. Because each grantee defines the program within the, the federal guidelines, but slightly differently.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to ten point two. I don't think we were.
There was no second and, and the, there, there was no second, right, so there's no need to table. Well, we could do a formal vote because, but because there was no second to the motion, the motion is not up for a vote, so it doesn't need to be tabled. And based on the administration's recommendation to defer it, we can just leave it go.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to ten point two.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point two through ten point five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ten point two through ten point five. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Movements pass. Ten point six?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve ten point six through ten point nine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ten six through ten nine. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to committee items.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve eleven point one.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the policy committee meeting minutes for April. Any questions or comments about that? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Eleven point two, the operations finance committee meeting report.
Thank you. The op, the operations committee met on May fourteenth, and there were several items of business. First was a discussion on upgrading and replacing various pieces of kitchen equipment district-wide. Casey Blankenmiller went over the pieces of kitchen equipment and the layouts of the kitchens that are being upgraded or replaced throughout the district buildings over the summer. So this is work that's going to be done shortly. The district received quotes from both Singer and the restaurant store for the equipment. They are both co-star vendors. The restaurant store was higher, and so Mr. Casey recommended Singer for supplying the equipment. And these purchases will be, well, are going to be on the May twenty-eighth board agenda for a vote. I think we already did that.
They'll actually be on the, the June agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I'm sorry. So anyway, that will, that will be on the next meeting. The replace, ah, second item was replacement and upgrade of lower, lower elementary boys locker room HVAC unit. Again, they, he went, Casey went over the purchase of a new air handler and related equipment for the upgrades. The old air handler was only for, was not for air conditioning. So the unit had to be replaced. There were some questions about the roofing, whether the roofing would handle the existing unit. Total cost of the project will not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. So, last part was, at the, before the meeting was adjourned, Dr. Finnerty spoke to the committee about the athletic field work, track and turf in the stadium. And these items will be presented in June to the full board. Right now, they are working on estimates, design, and getting recommendation op, options together. I think I mentioned a couple of times, they, there's work to be done on the field and on the track area around the field. So I think that's, do you want to make a comment?
Certainly. So there are, there are a couple of have-to items. The track is, needs replacement, and the tennis courts need replacement. Those two have-tos, so to speak, have triggered the conversation of should we look at a more comprehensive plan? Because if we fix the track, then we're going to do nothing to the field. So what, what we'll be presenting when we come together in June is, just like we did with our actual physical buildings, we'll pres, we'll be presenting some recommendations and actually asking the board to allow us to get a presentation from an engineering firm about what, what it could look like and what would the financing of it look like and how that would mesh with the financing that we have for our normal operations plus what we're trying to do with our physical buildings. So that's what we'll be presenting on, in June. One of the big things, I, I don't mind sharing it, one of the big challenges we have is we have an outstanding marching band that never gets to see the field. And we have outstanding football programs that very rarely get to see the field. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to address that. And one of the ways to do that is to look at artificial turf on the field. That, the wear and tear that the band and, and the football players do to a field is significant, and that's the reason they don't have access to their own home field. So that's, that's a big part of it. So that'll be part of the conversation. We'll look forward to a, a healthy discussion about where we want to go with that. But our recommendation is going to be try to engage some engineering firm in designing what could be possible and then building in a price structure to see what we can afford. Okay?
My kids, when they were in high school, were bando's and we were band parents. And we frequently joked that maybe there ought to be a fifteen-minute football game and two hours of bands. And it's, it's surprising to me because, you know, they went to a much larger school, so the band was, was huge and filled the field. It's surprising to me how good our band is, given its relative tiny size. You know, Dr. Finnerty and I went to Lehigh where there were the Marching Ninety-Seven. Marching Ninety-Seven came out and they filled the field. It's key for practice that you be able to hit your marks and know where the marks are on the field. And they sometimes move from rehearsal to rehearsal. Our band can't practice on that field under the current situation. And that came as sort of a shock to me because as good as our band is, they need, they will be better if we can allow them to practice. So that's my own personal pitch. And yeah, my kids didn't go here. We were, we were at another school. But I understand the importance and I understand the importance of band practice for the parents and the kids.
If I could just add something, we did attend the Music League banquet and I sat with the teachers. That was, the safety was their number one concern because they practice out in that parking lot and it's crazy out there. So it, to me, it really became a safety issue for them. So we need to, we, we will grow. Our program will definitely grow, no doubt. They do a phenomenal job.
Honestly, it's been something that I've really kind of struggled with and probably partly because I'm dating myself. Because, you know, turf was just kind of getting started in my probably late high school, early, like, college era. And I've always had the concerns of safety to that point of getting injured on turf versus not. But I've been doing a lot of digging into this and I saw like even something as, as simple as a lot of field hockey tournaments, they won't play if it's not turf, you know? So you're not going to get some of these district games at your own school because you don't have turf. And that's stuff that I didn't realize. Yeah, I am, yeah. I'm old, yeah.
This helps breed or create cohesiveness and, and among the groups. And I think that's very important, especially for the high school kids, that they have something outside of themselves. So anyway, you know, I, I can get on my soapbox.
And I just want to bring one thing up. When we did the, what do they call that Falcon Field out here? That was the same issue. Is it, you know, they're going to hurt themselves, knee injuries, this, that. But we had all the studies in front of us and it's become very successful. So that, that was a big, not sure if we want to do turf or not. But our, our athletes, actually, when they go to these competitions, they were always at a deficit because everybody else has turf, so they don't have a chance to practice and feel what it feels like on there. So with this was a success, so I think it's going to be something we're going to be surprised with.
And particularly for band. I mean, you can't be bothered with trying to look down and see, you know, is there a hole there? You know, it's a true surface. But yeah, I've been doing just so much research on it because I just, it's been sticky for me. And I was thinking too about, there's an expense to, when you have to dispose of that and refill. There is, there are concerns about the materials and what they're made of, and I haven't done all that deep dive yet. I'm, I'm hoping that over the years, they've come up with materials that are a bit more safe to breathe in in every other situation that you're in. So it's been something that's really been on my heart to keep researching. But it is, you know, learning that most higher-level tournaments and things of that nature, band competitions, the schools just will not have the opportunity to host these without a true surface like that. So it's, it's kind of where I've been with everything. It's kind of been consuming. So thank you for bringing the discussion up in June. It'll be exciting to talk about that together. Any other questions or comments now that I've rattled on? I apologize.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad other people are rattling on about it because this is, you, you think of the football field as being sacrosanct for the football team, but it's really used by a lot of other fields, especially the band. And they, they do need that place to rehearse.
I do have a question. So I know with the other turf field, the, the soccer field, whatever, you know, we keep that locked, right? Not that that does a whole lot of good. I can't tell you how many times I've been walking back there and I see kids climbing the fence to get in. I've seen their parents drop them off and watch them climb the fence to get in. I've, I, I have watched it. Anyway, how, how are we going to handle that? How would we handle that with the football field considering we, that is open for, you know, the, the track is open for walking and stuff like that?
That's an excellent question, and I think part of the conversation about the facilities should be, what do we want? What do we want our facilities to be, not just for us, but also for our community? Because I know in previous conversations, it's been important to this board that we have services to provide to our, or our access to provide to our community. So that would be a conversation about what that would look like and whether we would do that because it is a different conversation.
That's exactly what I was going to ask because the playgrounds are accessible to the community, at least during daylight hours, and I, like, just, why is it locked? You know, I understand, I don't know if any damage has been done over the years, but I think that's definitely a worthwhile conversation to have.
Yeah, because dam, damage to a grass field is more easily repaired than damage to a, a turf field. So it's something that we have to consider. But I think that should be part of the bigger conversation. And again, our, our ask really is to give us the authority to, to, to get some engineered drawings. And honestly, some of those engineering firms might, might provide them at, at no cost as part of the bid process. But we just, we just want to see, we, we don't want to do something, one thing here and then something else fails. We want to, we want to be thoughtful in a, a multi-year plan about how best to do this and also how best to pay for it. So that's really our big ask.
Just one last remark. I think you're raising very good points. Most of the other school districts have addressed this issue because most of the other schools don't have grass anymore. And I've been asking since this came up, numerous people, and the response is pretty much, you still have grass? And so the solution exists, and it may take a couple of phone calls to find out. Not how much it's going to cost, but that's another consideration, but what the solution is.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments with regard to the report? Okay, we're going to move on to the CIT committee report.
Good evening. The Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee met on May twenty-first, just last week. We had two agenda items, the first being our benchmark and intervention data update. This is a recurring agenda item that we have with that committee, two to three times per year, during which we talk about the process we use for collecting data about our students' achievement and growth. How we analyze that data and most importantly, how we use that to make important instructional decisions about what's next for them. So we collect information through three benchmark assessment periods throughout the school year, during which our students are taking assessments. Those assessments are national. Those assessments are nationally normed with predetermined cut scores that tells approximately where students should be operating at any point in time in the year. That's really valuable because when they're not quite meeting those particular benchmarks, we're able to respond pretty quickly within that given school year. So that means interventions could be put into place if they're doing very well, enrichments could be put into place. We put those things into place and then we continue to monitor that throughout the year to show the degree to which that intervention and/or enrichment, or just in regular instruction, has been effective. In addition to the academic data, we also looked at our behavioral data. That included positive referrals as well as discipline data. And we looked at that across each of the five buildings within the district. The second agenda item is the 18 Essential Practices. This is a resource that's recently been provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. This is a research-based document that provides the characteristics that really higher-performing schools, what are those common characteristics they have in place to get those higher performance from their students? And the exciting piece about this is it was done with very varied demographics. So it didn't matter what type of community you were serving, the students that were coming to you, if these practices were in place, growth was achieved. So we've, Dr. Finnerty, the leadership team has been spending a lot of time learning these 18 Essential Practices and we're pretty excited about them. There are four core conditions that are noted within there. That includes empowering leadership, fostering quality professional learning, a focus on continuous improvement, and providing student-centered supports. Those should sound pretty similar because they're things that we talk about quite often if you look at any one of our district goals that are in place. Each one of those conditions then has anywhere between three and five practices that are associated with them. And each of those practices can then be rated on a continuum from anywhere from emerging to well in place. We've decided to use this kind of as a mapping where we currently are in each of the buildings, what is our current reality in terms of each of those practices? And how can we use that current reality as well as that continuum to decide where do we want to be and what are the ways in which we can get there? So you may know that each year, we go through the process of working with our leadership team to really focus upon the goals that will be in place, how each building and/or department is going to attain those goals. We've collected information through this, looking at some survey results, looking at discipline data, looking at attendance data, all of which will be used by our administrative team, next week actually, to really begin designing what those plans will look like. Dr. Finnerty, anything you would add about that piece? I know you get very excited about this.
I do get excited about it. It's important work. The entire theme of the toolkit is continuous district-wide improvement. And the work that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has done over the past six years in developing this, these resources, because it is a collection of resources, I think is first rate. And it helps us affirm some of the things that we're doing. It also kind of shows the way where, some things that we can do better. And I'm looking forward to some really productive conversations with our admin team and moving forward and taking the next step for Pots Grove.
Okay, we're already at new business. Dr. Finnerty?
So there is a piece of new business that the JOC, Mr. Strunk brought up, but I know the other JOC members are also looking for this guidance. So we had the Western Center Director, Mr. Livinggood, present on four budget scenarios. We have approved Scenario One, because that was the scenario that was provided to us as we were developing the, our budget. Subsequent to that development process, the additional three scenarios were proposed. There is a board meeting for, a JOC meeting in the first week of June, and it would be important for our board to give our JOC members direction. So behind us, I think Chrissy has pulled up what the scenarios are, and then there's also some information about what the cost to Pots Grove would be. So if you recall, Scenario One is no additional, the additional security improvement and no additional administrator. And that is what's currently in our budget. Scenario Two has a safety augmentation which would improve, well, would change the entry door for the Western Center. Currently, they would, they enter through the high school office. This would create another secure festival in a different part of the building. Security, Scenario Three is the addition of an assistant principal. And then Scenario Four is the addition of both the security augmentation and the assistant principal. So as you consider the scenarios and what direction you want to give to the JOC members, the, I think it's important to consider where we are budgetarily. So we have approved our budget with Scenario One. There is a budgetary reserve line item in our budget. So we would be able to absorb additional costs without reopening the budget that was finally approved tonight. Obviously, the, as we ramp up Scenario Two to Three to Four, the price goes up. So we've talked, I think, a couple of times about the budgetary process and how we would expect future budgetary requests come through our normal budgetary process, so they're not approving something after our budget has passed. But this is where we find ourselves. So with that, it really is the board's will to kind of give direction to our three JOC members because they're going to be tasked with voting.
I do have a question. Normally for committee meetings, the idea is that the committee, you know, listens to everything and they come up with suggestions that they bring back to the board. Have the three of you talked about that? I mean, I'm not familiar enough with the JOC meetings because I don't, I know you're with other schools, so I don't know how much chance you have to actually speak amongst yourselves. But like, what are your thoughts?
Well, for me, I've been really thinking about this a lot, like you've been thinking about it for a few years. I know safety is one of the issues and I know they want Scenario Four. But what's been bothering me is every year we get a surplus and I'm always saying, we need that surplus for maybe things like this. Now, these are not capital investments, but over the last years, how many times I come back and say, we have a surplus over there? And we don't like surpluses. So to me, personally, just for me, I would, I know they need that assistant principal and that's what they really want and they feel they want. And I go by, they walk the hallways, they're there, I'm not there. But I do know we have, I didn't make the last meeting, but Upper Perk, you want to shine a little bit on what Upper Perk in Springford?
I've not gotten an update. I was told that Springford had not voted on it and that Upper Perk in a committee was pushing for Scenario Four, but that was committee and not full board. Jim, my answer to your question, because Patty wasn't able to make the last meeting, Chuck and I had talked about it, but it was just the two of us. We pretty much stood firm and united with Scenario One because that's what the board had approved here. There was a secondary reason where, I think I'm speaking for both Chuck and me here, we believe that a strength of the Western Center is short-term thinking and planning. And we have tried to, been trying to push a long-term thinking to complement the short-term thinking. So far, we have a comprehensive plan for the center that says they will develop a 10-year plan. I personally am not satisfied with the degree of movement that's gone with the long-range planning. My opinion is that, and it's just my opinion, I'll let Chuck say that, is that both Scenario Two and Three, while perhaps necessary, are based on short-term thinking, which I think is a strength of the Western Center. If there was a five- or 10-year plan that talked about how do we see applications moving over the next five years and what's that impact on increase or decrease in applications versus acceptance in terms of students? Then the question for me becomes is if we see that growing and there's acceptance, is that entrance still at the right place for what we're going to do? So does the short-term decision around the entrance, given that safety is needed now, match where we see the Western Center five or 10 years from now and we don't know that? So, and I'll let Chuck answer that, but for me, it's been very much, I've been resistive to push Scenario Two and have stayed with Scenario One, although I think it's a board decision here and I'm willing to support that primarily because of my opinion that the center needs a long-range plan. Typically, short-term stuff gets done because it's urgent and important. And the long-range stuff is important, but it's not urgent. So urgency trumps importance if it's not urgent. So it's not that they can't get it there, they just, it hasn't been pushed or it hasn't been done. Everybody says yes, no one's against it, but we've been trying to make it happen and it is in the comprehensive plan that they will have one. And it's a long-winded way of answering there, but because of that, and I'll turn to Chuck, I don't know if he sees it similarly or different, but I have really stayed with Scenario One and also because that's what we budgeted here. You know, with the others affordable. And I think even, I'll stop there and let Chuck talk.
Well, I'm going to be coming to pretty much the same conclusion because as Jay mentioned, what happened is they wanted to change the entrance. Now, I'm old enough to remember when Lower Pots Grove School was the middle school and the entrance, that's now the front entrance, was the back door. The entrance to this building changed when it was renovated, when one of the additions was added. So is the entrance where you want to start your long-range plan? I don't think so. Because it's easy to move the entrance if you're doing a long-range plan. And Lord knows, Lower Pots Grove School District has a historical record of inefficiency in long-range planning. And so does West. So I think very firmly that we're not ready to decide whether we want to change the security. The assistant principal, I raised the point. In the absence of a long-range plan, they haven't provided us with a job description. They say there's one, they promised to give me one, I'm still waiting. What's the job description for an assistant principal at West? I can guarantee you, it's not the same as the job description-
Was it?
Western Center, I'm sorry. Yeah, Western Center, excuse me. I'm pretty sure it's not the same as the assistant principal for any of the assistant principals here. But before I approve a position, I'd like to see a job description. That's not an unreasonable request.
Like when I hear safety, I think, oh, safety, we, but I guess the question is, is it safety because it falls under safety or is it because right now there's a void at the Western Center that we need to rectify right away to make it, that's-
Let me just say this, okay, just real quick, to kind of give it a picture. We have an executive director, we have a principal, we have a business manager, and the head of the custodial. That's our four leaders. So the business manager is tapped out with doing the grant. She does all the grants, she does all the budgets, she does all the billing, all the tuitions, on and on and on. So she really doesn't have time. You have the maintenance, I don't know his title, I'm sorry, but he's running around doing all this fixing and trying to get prices and, because we do have some issues over there with maintenance, like I've always told you, I wish we had a capital fund that we could pull out of here so we don't have to come back here and go through it. So really, you only have two people. You have the executive director who's out there trying to keep things going, introduce, go to all these different, get the community involved. And then you have an assistant principal. That's all they have. And that's all he's asking for, is one assistant principal to kind of take that slack, like to take, because they, if one, if the principal's out and the David's out, okay, the director, they can't be out at the same time. And we learned that with COVID. It was really, really tough. If one was sick and the other one wasn't, we really need another person over there. We really do. And again, it comes back to, and I've been saying this for years, when we get these surpluses back every year, it's like we should put that money aside for whatever so it won't tax our budget, just so we have that cushion. That's how I look at it. Now, you have to make your own decisions and I respect everyone's. But in my, from me being there and listening, sure, they don't have a 10-year plan, they have four people trying to hold the whole building together. And I see it and I feel for them. So that's why things haven't been taking place, because they just don't have that extra hours to finish it. That's how I feel.
Two things. One directly to you, my understanding of safety and security is for safety, they use a two-wall entrance. So students come in, become identified, and then they're buzzed in through second door. They have that currently. Currently, that goes by all the administrative offices and it's a small wall, so they want to move to the other place. So part of the 50,000 is building a second wall. They have that first wall, but they want to create a alcove for when the students come in to when they get the second door. And there would be someone sitting between those two walls to buzz students in. The other piece of safety and security is they're lacking cameras in the ceiling, which I think is a real need. They have blind spots in the hallway. So they want to do both the cameras and the wall to do that. And again, it's just, does that fit with long range? And for 50,000, does it matter? Could you change that with you do long range? The other thing I wanted to say, you asked about the other districts. Before coming here, I got an email from Keith McCarrick, who is a, was, used to be a board member at Pots Grove, is a board member of Upper Perk and is the president of the JOC. Sent it to all three of the superintendents from the sending school districts as well as the whole JOC, asking, has anybody decided what they're doing with budget? Because he's arranging, we have a JOC meeting on Monday and he's putting that agenda together. I responded immediately and said, we have a meeting tonight, we're going to vote on it. He got back immediately and said, thanks. But as of right now, no one else has responded. So I don't know what that means. I was told that Springford was going to go with Two, Option Two, which is the safety and security piece. I don't know if that's true. That's what the three representatives from Springford told me at the last JOC meeting. And Upper Perk, he said they had it in committee and Keith was leaning as president towards Four. If whatever Springford decides, if someone else agrees with Springford Two of the Three, that's the way it will be, which is the reality. So I don't know for the other two, and I was hoping that other people would have responded to Keith's email. It hasn't happened yet, or at least that I've seen. And I think you were copied on that email. I don't know if you saw it.
When I spoke to, when I asked him the question about, was he, what about safety that he was concerned about? Is there an issue with safety and security? Because that's how it was labeled. And he said, well, no, not really. We just need the flow of traffic better, if you guys remember that. So putting this under safety and saying it's safety, but he's not worried about safety, just the flow of traffic. I understand the camera part, but I don't, I don't agree with building an entryway for the flow of safe, for the flow of traffic. for the flow of traffic, and then calling it safety. That's not going to get us more students in there. Additionally, the Assistant Principal position is not going to get us more students in there, which is the biggest, our biggest goal. Now, if they need support, perhaps like an administrative assistant who could work on things that will free up the Principal for more important things, maybe that's what they need, as opposed to a full Assistant Principal. No, I believe they do all the work themselves.
That's the top four, the ones I told you about. They were, that is really what I see.
They are definitely shorthanded, and I understand that, but...
Did they lose someone? Because they used to have one.
Well, they did. I think it was Rachel, she was the IT person.
Right, but they, but, but...
They never filled it once she got...
What's his name, the guy who got canned? He had, he had someone.
So my understanding, when Mr. Maritzin was there, there was the same structure. There was a Principal and him.
So what did you interview for, Patty? But you interviewed for Chris's, like, assistant when he was there.
Oh, that was a while ago.
Right, but what, is that position no longer there?
No, no, that was, that was a secretary's position, administrative assistant. They do have one now, but there's only one, the business, she does the, I think she does the business too, because there was two secretaries there, there was an administration, and then there was a business secretary.
So there is an administrative assistant there? Okay.
But I'm saying the ones, the key, the key ones that have authority, that need to have authority, they really only have two. And then one guy does the maintenance, and if something comes up...
So let me point this out, though. Let's look at, you know, any one of our elementary schools. We're not running with five people that could take on, you know, a situation should it arise.
But you have the administration that kind of directs that.
So does the Western Center. No, what I'm saying is, look at, you know, look at West. We have a Principal and an Assistant. We don't have, they don't have three or four other people they can go to if something arises. If they're both out of the building, they're both out of the building. It's the same as the Western Center.
And Dr. Finney's in the building.
You know, I mean, how many people can they have there in case they're both out of the building?
More so the workload.
But we were told it was, a large part of it was because, you know, they couldn't both be out of the building at the same time.
No, it's true, true. They have run into trouble with that.
Okay, well, so do other buildings.
Yes.
So it's not unique to them.
They fall, they have nobody, they have nobody.
Well, who would, who would...
Call the superintendent to record, come fill in.
Right, and that would be the same here, too. So they're in the same position that we're all in. Okay, I don't see anything terribly unique about their position. I'm not saying that it's not a valuable school. It is very valuable, valuable, just as every single other school in this district is, and in every other district that feeds into that. So every single one of them is. I'm not dismissing the value of the school at all. What I'm saying is that their issue is not unique to the Western Center, because we have it here. I mean, look what we, look at the hiring we just did tonight, and that was to fill a need such as that, right? So they're not unique. While I understand they might have the need, and, you know, they have a lot of needs over there, I do, I just don't know that it was quite presented in the right way.
Well, I'm not sure the presentation should be the deciding factor. I mean, I could make an argument for, you know, boosting security, I can make an argument for adding another administrator. I can't make an argument for doing both at the same time. So if you had to pick one, it seems to me that adding to the administrative staff is going to allow them to get more done, which might even include security, or, you know. It makes sense to me that they need more horsepower.
Thing I'd say about, I understand that, you know, being short-staffed and having an extra person, I guess the thing that concerns me is what Chuck was saying, he's been asking for a job description. And that, and then you were saying about short-term, I feel like it sounds like they're saying, if we get money, that we can hire another person, they can help with stuff. But Chuck asking, what stuff? The answer seems to be stuff, as opposed to, oh, we're going to have them go in and start with, you know, pre-K counts, or something like that, they're going to have a specific goal. It just seems like we're, they're sort of not quite sure what, they just want extra help. And that makes me a bit wary about, like, if they had a plan for it, I feel like, that's sort of how I feel.
I think they have a plan, they just haven't shown it yet.
But Chuck's been asking for it, and they know it's providing on the districts to approve. Why aren't they?
We've asked for the plan, I mean, you know, this is not the first time. I've sat around and said, you know, what is this Assistant Principal or Assistant Superintendent, or whatever you want to call them, going to do? Because if you have a large capital investment plan in the future, which is, I suspect, what is the plan, then this person, whatever his title is, may be the senior project engineer in charge of all the capital improvements. I don't know, and I haven't seen a description. And we're asked to approve this budget, $25,000 for the entrance, whatever you think of it, at least we can understand what it is. But you don't go hiring people by saying, well, I need someone, so let me put down, oh, I think it'll take $25,000.
Yep, but in this case, it's going to be a half million dollars. So a half a million dollars for one person, I guess, yeah, that'd be a half a million dollars, what's for one person?
So I think I made my thoughts very clear. I think I also speak for all 10 of us here that we all love the Western Center and value the Western Center, and one of our chief frustrations is not enough access to the Western Center. One of the things that I think Dr. Nippert and Mr. Strunk are making, and probably Anique as well, is, so if there were another 200 kids in there, what would be the need? Because when you hire, or at least when I think of hiring an extra staff, I'm like, okay, what is the need? So earlier today, we approved an administrator to help pre-K counts. I mean, so that tells me what I need to look for. So I think one of the things that is important is to know, okay, what is the vision? What are we looking for? Because that might define the need differently. So say, for example, because I do know David made a good point, that he has a lot of new teachers. So if we're looking to expand students and he adds yet three more new teachers, maybe he doesn't need an Assistant Principal to handle discipline, maybe he needs somebody to handle curriculum and instruction and developing the teaching and learning. So I think, and I think though those conversations with that kind of data and with more enrollments would be, would fall on very welcome ears here. At least, that's the vibe that I get. So I don't think anyone is speaking against the Western Center. I think we're all huge fans, and it's just a matter of how do we take our limited resources and invest them wisely to support the Western Center, and also to support our students in the Western Center, if that's fair? So I say that by way of circling back, because we do need a decision. They need to know the will of the Board. Correct. And I think not just, hey, we approve Scenario Three. I think providing our JOC members with, hey, these are our priorities, and this is what we want to support in the budget process moving forward, what plan can we have to support that? Is that a fair kind of characterization of the tone here? Okay.
So to repeat that, we're going to just go around, and anything you might want to say, we can just give the number that we're in favor of, and if you wish to share why.
Would they be providing more information between now and then? And the reason I'm saying that...
Between now and Monday?
The reason I'm saying is that if we were going by what we know right now, I would go with Scenario One. But if between now and Monday, they were to say, this is what the Assistant Principal, this is why we want this person, this is what they're going to be doing, here's detailed information, I would want to know that I considered that, but I...
I was, in talking to Mr. Livinggood, this is my memory of the talks, I don't want to quit. The main reason he gave me for the Assistant Principal was the teachers at the Western Center are not necessarily certified teachers. They are technicians who are interested in teaching, and once given the job, they are given, I don't know what the timeframe is, but there's a timeframe that they're given to pick up their teaching certification. So they need mentors in the classroom to help them learn how to convey the technical knowledge they have to 15- and 16-year-olds to teach that. So it was that, it's more supervision in the classroom. I also believe that currently, they pay some of their certified teachers to do that work. So, and again, back to what I understood Dr. Finney said, there's no plan in place for what that looks like, how many teachers, what's the skill set? And if that's the primary reason for having them, then it should be in some kind of job description that's given. So I'm leaning towards Scenario One with this condition that a plan be put in place for what the next five years looks like, what are the needs, and how do you handle that needs? And I think we'd all support that, but there's just this lack of planning and just, oh, we need this, oh, we need that. And again, the only, the only specific I could get was the coaching in the classrooms, which the certified teachers do now. Granted, there's probably more of that needed, and you do have very, very good technical people who have an interest in developing kids, and they need help picking up the teaching skills.
So you had mentioned that you're at One?
Yes, it would be One with this plan, with some date set for One A. Whether that's a five-year plan or a 10-year plan would be put in place. I think the Western Center would absolutely benefit from long-range planning.
Patty? Anique?
Mine is One, because our goal, or my goal, is to get as many students the opportunity to go to the Western Center, and I don't see any of those, the other three scenarios allowing that.
Thank you. Tanya?
I'm also One. We already approved our budget, so part of me is a stickler for that, in planning and preparing ahead of time. And I'd also like to see something prepared, whether it's safety and teachers and administration, before we just throw money at it. My worry, my fear, and I think which is genuine, is that other school districts will outvote, and we will have to just comply and do what we need to do, which is a very, very real possibility. But for the sake of this vote, I side with Jay, I agree with what you said, and I'm going to stick with One.
Dr. Nippert?
I'll check until the others have gone.
Okay.
Because I'm on the Board.
Okay. Jim?
With what information I have at this time, One.
Okay.
Like, do you have three, if I need more information, but I don't have it?
Sure. Bill?
Yeah, I'm in the same vote. I think they need help, I don't think, I mean, nothing against anybody over there. It doesn't sound like a smooth operation, and I'm not sure that with the poor people they have that can be smooth operating. They probably need the guy. But I actually, you know, with a little more information, it is hard to go for it.
Ashley?
I'll go with the crowd and stick with One. I was going to say Two, because, you know, safety is important. But I don't think it would matter, because I'm in the minority, so I'll stick with Four.
Yeah, I have a very regretful One, and it's partly due to the deadlines of the planning. It was, it is an incredible educational facility, and I don't disagree that they do need some help. They are running very lean, we run very lean. And so it's a regretful One, based on, again, the hopes that the plan comes forward with, you know, we need this many teaching coaches, we need this much to do, to increase enrollment. We need to build rooms, we need to, you know, at one point, we mentioned the word modular. We need to do something to increase the space with which to educate the students. So that's where I would like to see the plan that we've all kind of talked about. And so it's, for me, it's a very regretful One.
Let me try, let me try and bitty wrap up here, because I think, Tina, you stressed a very important point. We are turning away students because they are at capacity. And nothing in this document addresses the issue of how are you going to deal with the major issue of you have to improve the enrollment? And I think they do an outstanding job. You know, there's a few, yeah, what do I know about cosmetology? What do I know about hair? But they, in the areas where I know something, they do an outstanding job. And some of that is a lot more expensive than chemistry labs, because network engineering changes almost yearly. Automated machine tool design, you know, you've got a two-year-old toy, who cares? But they need to be able to plan to adjust. What are you going to do when AI comes in? What are you going to do when people decide we're not going to use lithium batteries on cars? We're going to use hydrogen cells. What are you going to do? Those are the technological questions they have to deal with. This is not just writing science fiction, this is something they need to plan for. And that's where, that's what I think this whole argument has been about. It's not that there's a problem, they're excellent people, they're excellent teachers. I went through and got the tours, I think, I think all of you got. And I got it in a little more detail, because I'm an engineer, so I'm one of the crowd. But you have to have a plan, and that's where it's at. So thank you.
Yeah, it's perfect, and I mean, just personally speaking, I'm excited to see, I want to approve dollars for the Western Center, so I'm excited to see that. I'm excited to see the plan, because, you know, we, they've never really had that in place, so it'll be, you know, and I know I share that with each of you, that we all value it tremendously. They do an incredible job over there. The tour was impressive, absolutely impressive. So I'm excited about the new presentations, and the new dollars, and the assignment of those dollars, and what they can do to increase enrollment for all of the sending schools, quite honestly. Okay, do we need to cover anything else with regard to that? Yeah, we're done with that part.
Speaking of the Western Center, when we have graduation, all of our Western Center students have blue and gray ropes. So if you see them, congratulate them. The ropes, the ropes. No, not robes, ropes, ropes. A culinary student got $72,500, and one got $10,000. They were the two top ones, it just blew my mind. So it was a wonderful senior banquet, or award ceremony. So graduation, if you see the blue and gray ropes, there are graduating students.
Thank you. So Jay, we didn't touch on you for any new business.
None, thank you.
How about for you, Patty? Anique? Tanya?
I think I'm okay.
Dr. Nippert? Jim? Bill? Ashley? Okay, that brings us to. Oh, go ahead.
Just want to say, congrats to all the graduates coming up, looking forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you, Tanya. All right, we're moving to public comment. Anybody in the room with public comment? Anyone online with public comment? Thank you. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you. Good night, everyone.